I'd like to call to order the City Caucus meeting for Monday, July 14, 2025. We have 14 items for original consideration and one item for introduction only. If the clerk could please read the local law being introduced.
A local law to create Article 5, Section 210-20 to Chapter 210 of Schenectady City Code, Prohibition of Eviction Without Good Cause.
Thank you. If the clerk could please read item number one.
Item number one for final consideration, an ordinance to amend Article 7 Trucks, Section 248 of the Schenectady City Code to exclude trucks, tractor and tractor-trailer combinations over eight tons on Kings Road from Albany Street to the city line.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two for original consideration, a resolution calling for a public hearing to create a local law for Article 5, Section 210-20 to Chapter 210 of the Schenectady City Code, Prohibition of Eviction Without Good Cause.
Mr. Mutiveren?
My name is President. I would like to call for a roll call.
Roll call on item number two. Item number three.
Item number three for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the Department of Finance to make a second budget amendment to the 2025 golf course budget.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four for original consideration, a resolution to authorize the mayor or his designee to enter into supplemental agreement number one with New York State Department of Transportation for the Crane Street Bridge rehabilitation over CSX Amtrak, City of Schenectady, New York State DOT PIN number 1762.36.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five for original consideration, a resolution authorizing a 2025 reallocation related to an agreement between the City of Schenectady and CSEA Local 1000, AFSCME, AFLCIO Unit 8501.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six for original consideration, a resolution authorizing a 2025 budget reallocation related to an agreement between the City of Schenectady and the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 158, District 106, Operating Engineers.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for the City Hall parking lot, 27 Broadway License.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 652 Sunset Street for $1,500.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number nine.
Item number nine for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 714 Broadway for $31,000.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number 10.
Item number 10 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the redemption and withdrawal of 2110 Lennox Road from foreclosure.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number 11.
Item number 11 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax search year reaction by the owner of property located at 433 State Street.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number 12.
Item number 12 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax search year reaction by the owner of a property located at 450 Duane Avenue.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number 13.
Item number 13 for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim by Mount Pleasant Bakery, Inc., and Joseph Rotano.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. And item number 14.
Item number 14 for original consideration, a resolution recognizing the March for Jesus 20th Anniversary.
Discussing committee without objection on consent, and this will be presented at their march on July 26. Thank you. If there's nothing further to come before the City Council Caucus, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Mutiveren, second by Ms. Patrick. All in favor? Aye, we are adjourned. I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order for Monday, July 14, 2025, and I'd like to call on Reverend J.C. for the prayer invocation.
Father, we thank you once again for this marvelous place. We thank you for giving us another day in this land of the living. Now we pray for wisdom, Father. Wisdom to ask the right questions. Wisdom to get the right answers. For you are the God of wisdom, with our wisdom in this place, tonight, oh God, in this place. And we give you thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to call on Harleen Andrus to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd ask the clerk to please complete the roll call.
Mr. Toro. Mr. Farley. Mr. Mancini. Mr. Mutiveren.
President.
Thank you.
Ms. Patrick. Mr. Williams is absent. Ms. Porterfield.
I'd ask for approval of the minutes for June 23, 2025. Move by Mr. Mutiveren, second by Ms. Patrick. All in favor? Thank you. I'd ask the clerk to please read any communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, July 14, 2025, under official there were none, under general there were none, and under petitions there were none.
Thank you. Calling on council members to provide any committee reports. Okay, at this time, we will have privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. And I'm going to guess at a number, but it looks like we have about 23 people signed up to speak. Okay. The first person signed up is Justinia McCully. She did submit an online, she does, we do have an online submission for this individual.
She wrote, "Nitrous oxide, often sold in small canisters as galaxy gas or whippets, is being used by teens and young adults across the country, including here in Schenectady. New York Public Health Law, Section 338, 3380, it is unlawful to sell or deliver nitrous oxide for inhalation purposes except for lawful medical, dental, or industrial use. Vendors must have a legitimate reason for sale and cannot knowingly sell for recreational inhalation. The New York General Business Law, 339-HH, retailers must post signs warning against unlawful use of nitrous oxide. Failure to do so can result in fines. I am proposing adopting language to make the sale of nitrous oxide outside of grocery stores illegal in Schenectady."
Thank you.
Good evening. I am speaking about good cause eviction. Now, if it was my choice, I would like to see code enforcement have enough staffing to make sure that every apartment in New York State, but Schenectady specifically, is safe, inhabitable by any reasonable standard. I would also love to see a fund created so that people with low income in an emergency would have access to some way to maintain their residence. But it's not Christmas, and as far as I can tell, there are no saints here for miracles. What we can do, very realistically, is do what New York State has already given us the opportunity to do, which is pass good cause legislation in Schenectady. I just want to toss a few quick stats at you. This is 2022, and it's according to that infamous communist organization, the United States Census. If you live in the ZIP code 12307, one in every 6.8 renters faces eviction. 12308, one in every 9.5. 12305, one in every 10.2. 12304, one in every 8.4. 12303, one in every 10.6. Now, if we go to some of the other ZIP codes, Rotterdam, 12306, one in every 27. Glenville, 12302, one in every 922. And Iskuna, one in every 70. Now, I agree that landlords should have the right to protect their buildings, but here are the rights that landlords still have under good cause. You can evict someone for non-payment of rent. You can evict someone for violation of the lease, as long as you've provided a 10-day notice to cure. Nuisance behavior, neglect of property, gross negligence, still can evict someone for that. The occupation of the unit is not safe. Failure to give access, using the apartment for illegal purposes, plans for the owner or close family member to occupy, no longer going to be a rental. Tenant refuses to sign a new lease with proper notice, and the rent increase, of course, is limited to 5% plus the rate of inflation, or 10% cap. As I read through these today, again, kind of reviewing the good cause law, it struck me that I can't understand why someone would oppose this. You can still evict someone for all the reasons you used to be able to, but what you can't do is evict someone randomly. Hey, I don't like them. I don't like their attitude. Well, tough. There's a process for people to be, a lease not renewed, or evicted, should that process go forward. So with all of that, and all these landlord protections.
I need you to summarize.
Thank you. I don't understand, I mean, it just seems like to oppose this is more of an act of cruelty than it is responsibility. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we do have a full house. I want to remind speakers that you do have three minutes, and also, please do not boo other speakers. Everyone has a right to their opinion. Greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Canyon Ryan. I'm the executive director of United Tenants of Albany, but we have a vested interest in the Capital Region tenants, and especially good cause eviction. What I've asked the council member to distribute is a little document that I wanted to share with everybody. It's a list of the publicly available information that I think is relevant to good cause eviction. The one thing I wasn't able to get was the amount of evictions that have been executed. I had to submit a FOIA to Schenectady County, and that hasn't been responded to yet. Between 2022 and 2023, Schenectady was the third highest county for evictions per 100 renters, as the former speaker kind of already acknowledged. The Capital Region tenants disproportionately are impacted by the eviction crisis, as demonstrated by Rensselaer being number one, and Albany being tied for number four, but Schenectady is tied for number three. I've also included some statistics about evictions for the major ZIP codes in the area. On the second page, you'll see the types of eviction in the city between 2022 and 2025. You see that holdovers represent about a fifth of all eviction proceedings, of which good cause eviction would likely reduce that significantly. We also see that the total number of eviction filings have gone down, not significantly, but they have. I just want to note that in Albany, eviction proceedings have gone down about 20%, but eviction executions have actually increased. So there's less frivolous lawsuits or frivolous eviction proceedings being taken into the courts, but there's still an issue here nonetheless. I also included below this, oh, and sorry, so just to say, that demonstrates that one in every 10 renters across the city face eviction here in Schenectady. Next is the fair market rent between 2020 and 2025, as well as the area median income between the same period. What it demonstrates is that for a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom, there's been a respective increase over the last five years of a 43.85% and a 41.08% for two bedrooms. Meanwhile, the area median income has only increased 17%, which demonstrates that over the last five years, fair market rents have increased at a rate of higher than 2:1 the tenant's average income, which I think is really remarkable, actually, that rents are outpacing our wages by 2:1 over the last five years. And I also included a list of the localities that have opted into good cause as of April 23, 2025, according to DHCR's website. What you'll find here is that the only changes, aside from, so the two things the city can change is the maximum fair market rent and then the definition of a small landlord, all of these cities have opted to define a small landlord as those with one unit anywhere in New York State within their rental portfolio, and they've only changed the maximum fair market rent, which I think is the right call here. And the reason for that is because it's very difficult for tenants to know if they're protected by good cause eviction, if it's not in their home. If they look upstairs, they know that there's a renter upstairs, they know that they're protected. If they look upstairs and their landlord lives there, they know that they're not protected. They're exempt from good cause eviction. And then on the final two pages, I've just included some case studies, one from Dankert Village and one from Bleecker Terrace, where tenants were facing egregious rent hikes, and we were able to win good cause eviction in both of these cases at different time periods. What's, and I'll kind of rest my case there. I hope that this is helpful. I heard Councilmember Mancini say that he wanted to see more data, and I thought that it would be helpful if I prepared some for you. Thank you so much.
I'm here tonight because I'm stoked about having an opportunity to speak. Can you hear me all right?
Not really.
Yeah?
No.
Can you take the mask?
I can't.
I'll take care of it, young people, please. Thank you. Would you just like to, you could leave your statement with us if you would like.
I don't, I have a notepad. I can't take my mask off. I'm...
If you, okay, ma'am, if you want to, ma'am? Yes, ma'am? Excuse me? Can you let me do this? I appreciate it. If you could just go ahead and speak, and we'll try the best, if you can get as close to the mic as you can. Thank you.
One of my main concerns is landlords don't need to show that they have good reason to get rid of a tenant, so their non-renewing tenants in retaliation for asking for basic I am here to speak for a group of people that have no voice and get no respect. For the past 10 years, I lived in the YWCA of Schenectady and the Stockade. The assumption is that people who live in the YWCA are illiterate and ignorant, and that they are old hookers who can no longer make a living selling you-know-what. I have two master's degrees. I taught at SUNY, and I can speak for myself. Something happened, and my life took a turn, and that's how I ended up at the Y. I moved out of the main building because they're shutting it down, because it needs repairs, and I moved into a house in the Stockade. For the past two weeks, my temperature in my house, I'm on the top floor of a two-apartment house, has been between 85 and 100 degrees. When I left home this evening at 6:15, it was 90 degrees. I have no air conditioner, and I can't open my windows because they either don't have screens, or the screens are in the windows, but they're not in the grooves. When I first moved in in November of 2024, I couldn't open the windows because they were painted shut, because the house was built in the 1800s, it's got some peg in it, and nobody told me how to open the windows. and nobody told me how to open the windows that I could get open. Now, I'm in an apartment for over two weeks since the heat wave started. Between 85 and 100 degrees every day. I can't open the windows because when I do, there's no screens and the bees and the mosquitoes come in and I'm allergic to them. I'm 65 years old. I have asthma and have dealt with atrial fibrillation. When I moved into the apartment in November of 2024, I told them that there were problems with the windows. It's now July, they still haven't been fixed. I also requested a peek hole because I can't see who comes to the front door or my apartment door. That was in November of 2024. I only got the peek hole a few days ago. Recently, a man came to the door. He was wearing a helmet and a yellow reflective vest and he wanted to come in and see my meter. I don't have a meter. I refused to let him in because I was alone in the house and I was scared. When I called the utility company, there was no work order for a man to come into my house.
I need you to summarize, please.
My point in coming tonight in summary is that I have no rights. I can't, I'm living in an unsafe environment. I'm paying rent, but my landlords don't have to do anything and it's the YWCA. They're supposed to be taking care of women. And it's not that way at all. Some of them, the women who live there, are hookers and they are on drugs.
I need you to summarize, please.
But not everybody is. So what I'm saying is, is please remember, not everybody is worried about their rent being raised because I'm in rent control and I only pay 1/3 of my very small income.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ellie Pepper? Ellie Pepper?
Good evening, Mayor, Madam President, City Council members. My name is Ellie Pepper. I live in the city of Schenectady. We often hear landlords describe themselves as small business owners, and they are. But every other small business knows that to stay open, you have to treat your customers well. If a coffee shop gave you burnt coffee or refused to fix a broken table, you'd stop going there. Tenants are housing customers. But unlike other customers, they can't just walk out the door because housing is essential and moving is expensive and disruptive. That's why some baseline protections are necessary. Good cause doesn't prevent landlords from making a fair return. It just asks them to have a good reason for ending someone's tenancy. I also want to correct something the mayor recently said. He claimed he hasn't heard from anyone who fears retaliation for requesting repairs. That's simply not true. Just a couple of weeks ago, at the rail, a few people talked about this very issue. One woman in particular, who's here again tonight, spoke about how she has lived in her apartment for 12 years and always paid rent on time. When a new owner took over and neglected maintenance, she asked for the needed repairs. The response? She was told she could move if she didn't like it. That is retaliation and it's exactly what good cause is meant to prevent. And she stood up here and talked about it. Finally, I want to raise concern over the mayor's repeated framing of this issue as about protecting the middle class. That may sound neutral, but it's a dog whistle. It implies that tenants, especially those in need of protection, aren't part of the middle class, that they're somehow other. In reality, tenants are middle class. They're also working class, retired, disabled, parents, students, and essential workers. And even if they're not middle class by income, don't we want a city where everyone is protected from unfair treatment regardless of their socioeconomic status? This is a moment to show that we value fairness, stability, and dignity for all residents. Please pass good cause eviction protections. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamaica Miles?
Good evening, everyone. I first want to start off by saying thank you to the council members that moved this out of committee, that made sure that good cause didn't stay in some perpetual turning cycle of debate, but did move it forward is very much appreciated. And not just that it was moved out of committee, but that, yeah, it's just one copy of all the petition signatures. I apologize. But that it's the strongest possible version of this legislation. That Schenectady didn't just kowtow and say, "We're gonna compromise," but went forward with finding the most powerful piece of legislation that we could in this moment to support renters in this city. It's a copy of the petition signatures that have been collected over the last few weeks. The total number of signatures happens to be 194 and of those, 148 of them in Schenectady. Some of the comments that you'll see is John Romano, who said, "Stable housing lowers the crime rate." Or Sabrina Hankins, "I agree, things need to change. These are real people having real issues." Or Alex Solomon, "This would be a tremendous good cause for the people of Schenectady." Or Corinne Dixon, who said, "Rent is outrageous. Rent don't match pay." Or Lisa Russo, "Tenants need time to find an alternative if things aren't working out. They need solid, helpful, free resources and support to help them understand their rights and their opinions, I mean, their options, and the support to be able to follow through." Or Kanima Haynes, "They also need to put a cap on how much rent can be charged up here. These landlords are living in New York City and charging rent up here like it's New York City and people's incomes can't even afford the rent." Christine Walther, "Stop outrageous rent increases for our people of Schenectady. People should have affordable places to live if we want Schenectady to thrive. We need a place for all people to live with dignity and affordable homes." Or Andrew Tobias Nelson, "Our communities thrive with stable housing. Without a safe place to rest, it is more difficult to keep a job, to learn in school, to stay healthy. Affordable housing makes livable communities for all of us, for all of us." Or Leanne Earring, "Evictions upend lives. Moving when you can't or don't want to is traumatizing. People who pay their rent should not live in fear of losing their home because of greedy or lazy landlords. Owning a rental property doesn't make you a god. You aren't providing housing. You're extracting wealth from the working class." Or Juliana Radigan, "I hope the council sees this for what it is, a chance to, so what's best for the, a chance to do what is best for the people of Schenectady instead of doing what is best for the personal profit." That's just an example of the sentiment that has been expressed for a very long time. I myself stood here and talked about my own personal experience in the city of Schenectady, which apparently fell on some deaf ears in not recognizing what I shared, the personal stories I shared of my life in this city and the number of times I had to move and the hardship that it caused. But here we are with this great opportunity to ensure that we move the city in the right direction because I was told this is a new Schenectady. So if this is a new Schenectady, then I look forward to good cause passing unanimously and supporting the idea of there being a new Schenectady, one that supports everyone regardless of their economic base, the neighborhood they live in, or any other determining factor that might treat someone as an other. Thank you.
Thank you. Shnema Bissong?
Good evening. Thank you to the ladies and gentlemen of the council and for our city for hosting this. My name is Shnema Bissong. I'm coming here to speak on behalf of the consumer and someone who's had to navigate the crazy housing market and the completely disruptive habits of agencies and the processing of having to do a transfer of housing or to transition from a stable rent payer who is paying their rent on time and being placed into a position where we're referred to, and I'll use a quote by, used by some of the people opposing those people. And I'm just going to read some of the effects of having to be upended unfairly as a consumer and someone and the constituency that I've had to basically battle homelessness when it wasn't supposed to be an enemy of mine. Emotional and mental health, strength anxiety, stress and anxiety. And this is the impact on children, interrupted education, loss of routine and security, debt and insipidity, barriers to future housing. The way that it impacts your credit or your credibility when you're trying to transfer from one unreactive housing providing office to another. So I feel that it is unfair to undermine the importance of the consumers. It seems obvious that if you were to deny or oppose fair evictions that you actually should understand and do understand that directly causing social impacts like displacement from social networks, weakened community ties, it affects a certain demographic. And those people, where the burden falls on them to then send applications to landlords who are not local, who are out of town, to wait for unresponsive processing paperwork and including the fees and those of us who have to deal with time constraints because of these unreactive actors. I feel like all that burden found themselves on top of the consumer. It would make it obvious that the consumer and people who are paying rent who are struggling to pay these mortgages for landlords that are, may or may not be here, they're the backbone. They're the backbone of the city. The consumer is the backbone of the city. So having a legislation that lacks any language that protects those people, it seemed, would be obvious that it's clear. Health risks, and in particular, being, again, one of those consumers who had to deal with bouncing from health provider to health provider to find out whether my son was exposed to lead when it's the properties that contain the lead. And again, the burden is on the consumer not to be sick and not the landlord to clear their house of hazardous materials. And again, it sheds light that the consumers bear the burden of this housing, this housing market, and they should be protected. And that's why you should pass good evictions for the consumers because they're the backbone.
Thank you. Sean Radigan?
All right, you can hear me? Yeah, hi, good evening. On June 23, the council heard from both sides of this issue. I was a bit taken back at so many of those speaking against good cause eviction, using the fears of bad landlord behavior being used as an argument to not regulate landlord behavior as good cause eviction would do so. Several of the individuals speaking against opting in were concerned that somehow by requiring a reason for eviction or limiting rent hikes to a maximum of 10% without justifiable reason would push out landlord, good landlords, and would only be left with predatory absentee landlords. This is fear-mongering and the opposition has offered no data to back up these claims. I did a little processing of the tax assessment from 2025 and estimated that at least 11,000 units would likely be affected by good cause eviction law. That's over 11,000 individuals and families that passing this law can benefit. Those 11,000 units are estimated using the 2,101-family, 2,902-family, 303-family, and 590 apartment properties listed in the tax assessment. I estimated four units for each of the apartment properties to be conservative, but that could be way higher than that. So that's really not accounting for all of the large apartment buildings and complexes in the city. Because most of the buildings in the city likely were built before 2009 and I excluded any properties where the owner's address matches the property's address to account for owner-occupied units. So I feel 11,000 units is a fairly solid estimate. So you have the numbers, you've read the law, you have heard tenants tell you how they need these protections. You've heard about how concerns of the courts being overwhelmed has been proven to not be the case in areas implementing similar law. You know that landlords can still evict tenants who damage property, cause nuisance, and don't pay rent or otherwise breach the lease agreements. You know that landlords can still raise the rent beyond 10% for various reasons in the law. So please, let's build a better Schenectady where tenants can lay down roots and stay in their homes. Thanks.
Thank you. Laurel Barnes?
Good evening, Madam President, Councilmen, Mr. Mayor. As you remember my last speech here, I feel it was very powerful and meaningful. I have heard from many people. A lady that has a shop down on J Street. Her sister was kicked out of her apartment and she had a family all because the landlord had a relative that needed the apartment. You can't tell me that that's not disgusting, 'cause it is. They had no right doing that to her and her family. She had kids. I'm still afraid to even talk to my landlord for fear he is gonna remember what he said and he's gonna kick me out next year. And believe me, none of you want to see that happen because I will not be in a good way. I will not. This is new Schenectady. Why don't you make it a better light that it will bring people in who want to stay here and live here and bring their light to all of us? And if you don't feel that's fair, I really don't understand. You'll be hurting a lot of mentally ill people who can't take being thrown out because we don't have the money. I live off disability. I make about $15,000 a year. I don't have, I don't have the good graces of being able to move and I like where I am. The landlord is just a jerk. He has no respect for anybody in his buildings. Nothing. And he hardly ever shows up for anything unless it's a serious emergency. And he goes over to his gas station at the sicko place, which is right across from us. He never comes by to check to see if everything's okay 'cause he doesn't care. I've got windows that allows bees to come in and all these other bugs. And, you know, one of the things I think we all want are better windows so we could keep the heat in and keep the cool in and not have to worry about it. I live on the second floor. And the first two years I was there, I didn't have an AC. I lived on ice packs and a fan. And the landlord even before this one, he was a good guy, but he still didn't care enough. And I want to leave you with all this one quote. "Please don't hurt the people that are part of this city. Just don't hurt them. The landlords are still protected." But this is basically going on the LLCs, who are the evil ones. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Mohamed Hafiz? Mohamed Hafiz?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, City Council Member. My name is Mohamed Hafiz and I'm here. My name is Mohamed Hafiz and I'm here to speak as a Schenectady landlord. I'm speaking again is to propose good cause eviction law because there are plenty of new apartments that the city has built for low income tenants on Albany Street, Crane Street, Van Vranken Avenue, that we actually have to compete against, the slow rent and a bunch of other places. For those tenants who are unhappy with their current landlord, please move out to one of these control, controlled rent apartments that the city has built or other projects that are being built right now. You will be happier in another place. And for those people who complain about a screen window, I mean, the Home Depot sells a screen window for 15, $15 that will protect you. And landlords, I know a lot of landlords just provide that if the screen is missing. I had screen windows that tenants just push out to put in air conditioners and they don't bother picking it up from the ground. And then they wind up having no screen window. We replace it with a $15 screen window from the Home Depot. So it's always a tenant's damage that caused this. For years, the city of Schenectady, HUD and banks have been selling homes for a lot less than the market price. So go ahead, try to buy a new house, try to get a loan like we did. We started that way. We started with applying for a loan to buy a property and it went on and on. The 5%, the 5% of yearly increase that some of the council members are talking about, it's way too low to cover the increase in operating costs. We have the water sewer and trash collection fee that you have increased on us, the city has increased on us. We have the material and supply costs that quadrupled in some cases. We have insurance premium that increased for about 30% on average. I know because I'm in the insurance business. We have the higher legal costs. We have to hire a lawyer if we have a corporation or LLC. We have, we have higher legal costs to evict non-paying and problem tenants. And the retaliation issue they all talking about and they all worried about, you know, being retaliated against, there's a bunch of other federal and state laws that protect you from retaliation. Why add another law? It's useless. There's no need for it. If this law passes, I promise you, a lot of the landlords will keep the apartment vacant until we sell the property. I promise you, I'll keep mine vacant until I sell my properties. And that's, guess who's going to buy? The absentee landlord that everyone dislikes in this town. We all know that pressing this law before November election is a politically motivated issue. While it may appear to be helping tenants to, you know, to get their votes, it will just make it finding affordable apartment a lot harder for them in the long run. So please do not vote for the good cause eviction law in Schenectady. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Triano?
Hi, good evening, City Councilmembers. I'm here tonight to urge you all to vote yes on Schenectady opting into the good cause eviction law. Schenectady residents desperately need good cause eviction law protections. According to the City of Schenectady, 2020 through 2024, consolidated five-year strategic plan overview and the Capital Region Housing Affordability Study by CDRPC in 2020, a household in Schenectady would need to earn at least $44,600 per year. That's $21.44 an hour to afford a two-bedroom rental unit at fair market rates. However, the hourly mean wage for a renter in Schenectady County was only $15.16. As of 2023, the average hourly wage needed to afford a one-bedroom apartment in the Capital Region, including Schenectady, was $20.25. Renters in Schenectady County face rent deficiencies with their hourly wages insufficient to cover housing costs for both one and two-bedroom apartments. This is not just a housing issue. It's a wage gap, a cost of living crisis and a public policy failure all in one. Good cause eviction does not eliminate a landlord's right to evict. Landlords will still be able to evict tenants for non-payment, legal activity, lease violations and property damage. They will still be able to raise rent so long as those increases are reasonable and based on actual costs. What this law does do is protect tenants from unjust evictions, retaliation and unaffordable rent hikes, especially when those tenants are simply advocating for safe and livable housing. This is not about punishing landlords. It's about protecting residents, particularly those who rent from small local property owners. In fact, this law can help preserve local ownership by preventing corporate landlords from artificially inflating rents and pricing out community-based landlords. At the last meeting, I heard concerns from landlords suggesting that if good cause passes, they may leave units vacant, tighten rental requirements or sell their properties to corporate owners. But let's be clear, those are choices. If a landlord responds to fairness with retaliation, that reflects their values, not the intent of the law, of this law, I'm sorry. Good cause does not force anyone's hand. It simply sets a baseline of decency. So I urge each of you to read the good cause eviction law carefully, set aside disinformation and reflect honestly on what this means for the people of Schenectady. We need policies that support stability, dignity and affordable living for all residents. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. Joan Justice? Joan Justice?
Good evening, Madam President, Councilmembers and Mr. Mayor. I believe that many residential property owners are conscientious. They maintain their properties well and they are truly concerned about good tenant relations. We don't need good cause eviction for those rental property owners. There are many who are not conscientious and interested in good communications with their tenants. I also request that you consider that many business investments do not involve people's I do feel threatened about retaliation because I have asked for proper care of my apartment and maintenance, even involving proper ground faults protections. This is what I heard. You play with me and I'll play with you. Is that possibly a threat of retaliation? I have to operate under that concern. I too, I'm a person who having worked for pay since I was 14, am now no longer able to work, both by age and by granted full disability status. My income is very limited. I do have access to all the help available to me and I am very grateful and I appreciate it. But I'm here to tell you that there are some landlords who are so emboldened by abilities to remove tenants without good cause, that just this Thursday, an adjacent property owner, not my building owner, one who shared a property line with my building owner. This is an owner occupied building. One of the partners in this business that owned this building does occupy an apartment. Since their arrival for two months, we have been unable to use our parking lot. Access has been denied regardless of easement rights. Parking on other people's property is taken because this owner occupier allows guests. I do, I've witnessed it's been encouraged that such a thing be allowed. I've heard it. And recently, the other property owner adjacent, same building, threatened to contact my building owner to indicate that I was an issue because I wanted less noise after 12, midnight? Because I can't go anywhere. I have no options. And I beg you, I am begging you, protect us.
Thank you. Bridget Savage Spies? Bridget?
Hello, my name is Bridget Savage Spies. I wanted to thank the council for moving forward with the strongest possible version of good cause eviction. We really appreciate it. I really appreciate you guys giving this topic the consideration that I think it deserves. I've heard, I heard last time that the council would like a little more information on, as to the impacts of good cause. While Sean spoke to that a little bit, I want to say that over half of Schenectady is renters and 88% of those renters would be covered by this version of good cause that you guys have presented. So with that, the impacts are wide reaching with the potential to significantly improve the lives of tenants throughout Schenectady. Now it can be hard to track how many lease non-renewals there are because they're not filed with the courts like an eviction is, but studies by RAND suggest that there are five and a half informal evictions, they call them, for every eviction filed in the court. Further research suggests that children are more than twice as likely to experience any type of eviction with the problem being dramatically worse for black children. Any type of eviction or housing instability can be extremely harmful to those children with a study from NYU Grossman showing that instability, regardless of the degree, if it happens one time or 10, it can lead to worse health, health outcomes later in life. And of course, if children need to transfer schools, it's disruptive to their education, socialization. Displacement impacts the whole community, not just those who are displaced. But the community and the city, the whole city feels the loss when a community member or a family is forced to leave. Telling someone that they need to leave their home is extremely serious. I heard a property manager at the last comment period in June say that under good cause, they would have to provide proof to get a tenant out of their home. And I hope so. If a decision to remove a tenant or, and their family can be made unilaterally in silence without supervision from, or oversight from courts or anyone, then it can and as we've heard today, does go wrong. Good cause, if nothing else, at least brings that process out into the light. It at least shows us where the problems are. It determines whether or not a landlord has a good cause to remove a tenant or if it is something simply like simple retaliation. While there are laws that prevent retaliation, they protect tenants after they've been displaced. Whereas good cause prevents that from happening in the first place. I really urge you to vote yes on good cause eviction because I believe that it makes the fabric of the city stronger and it has done so for other cities across New York and I hope it can do so for Schenectady. So thank you.
Thank you. Chris Su? Chris Su?
Hi, my name's Chris. I'd like to speak on behalf of tenants like myself in support of good cause eviction. So 17 is the number of cities and villages that have already opted into good cause across the state. And good cause is a state law that's already a compromise that doesn't punish good landlords while providing necessary stability and tenant protection to ensure stability in people's lives. Good cause eviction should really be called common sense protections. Clear guidance on what constitutes good cause should lead to less backlogs in the courts and better outcomes for tenants and landlords. So the limit of 5% plus CPI for a one-bedroom home, which is currently $1,265 according to the HUD for 2025, is $104 per month. That's an allowable rent increase, which is $1,245 per year. So I, I think that's already a pretty large amount for people to see as an annual increase. And there are already carve-outs to consider property tax and other tax increases and expenses for the landlords. So I encourage the council to pass the strongest version of good cause because there are already these carve-outs for the landlords and to close the small landlord loophole of having one unit and having the fair market rent at a high level. And in summary, vote yes to pass good cause eviction. It'll help the community grow in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly Loth?
Good evening. We've been very focused so far on who would benefit from or be harmed by opting into good cause, but we haven't really talked about who benefits from the status quo. Who gets the best deal if things stay exactly as they are? And I think SLIC is making the case that landlords as a group are the ones who benefit from the status quo. But I don't think that's true because I think there's actually a really big, really fundamental divide among landlords and the status quo really only protects one subgroup and it's not the good landlords. As things stand now, the people getting the very best deal are the ones who benefit the most from renters being unprotected. The people who benefit the most from the status quo are the landlords who want to take advantage of people, whose business model depends on being able to evict people for no good reason, whose business model depends on providing substandard housing, whose whole business is just being as horrible as they can possibly get away with in order to make a buck. Good landlords, and I'm confident that lots of the folks in SLIC are good landlords. Good landlords are not protected by the status quo because their own standards and ethics are already imposing stricter limits than the new law would. If you are already using eviction only as a last resort, if you are already worrying every time you have to raise the rent to cover your costs, if you're already making sure that the heat actually works and the dryer gets fixed in a reasonable amount of time, then your personal standards are already higher than the standards that this law would apply to you. But decent landlords are competing in a marketplace with people who do not have high personal or professional standards. Decent landlords are competing in a marketplace with people who treat tenants like scum and properties like trash. And I know that my neighbors in SLIC know probably way better than I do exactly which landlords I'm talking about. And those are the landlords who are protected now. Those are the landlords who will win if Schenectady chooses not to opt in to, to good cause. And so I would invite my neighbors who are good landlords, who know that nobody would describe them as slum lords, to look very closely at what's actually in the good cause law and then to ask yourselves, who exactly does it benefit for our city to keep giving slum lords a pass? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure of the first name, the last name, Sukdwan?
Mr. Mayor, councilors, good evening. Good cause eviction would bring more hardship on landlord. As it stands, most tenants remain in their rented apartment without paying rent for at least six months. That is what it stands now. How are the landlord going to maintain their property and go on? And if we make it worse, what would happen? Many tenants are deliberately withholding their rent because they know they can stay in an apartment for six months without paying any rent and then they go find another one and the system continue like that. We We observe those pattern. If the good cause eviction is accepted by the city of Schenectady, tenants would abuse the privilege. Landlord would not be paid their rent as a result. They would not be able to maintain their property. Schenectady would once again deteriorate like it used to be before, and abandoned building would abound once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Morris?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is too high for me. Don't get old, you get shorter. My name is Chris Morris. I'm the founder and director of SLYC, Schenectady Landlords Influencing Change. We are the only organized group of small landlords, realtors, and property managers in the city. And our ultimate goal has always been to provide education, information, and updated data on how to properly run properties, rental properties. That is always strictly our goal, our main goal. There are three major factors in the housing rental equation. First, the rental property itself. Second, the owner of the property. And third, who the owner chooses to live there. It should be clear that a much larger investment is made by that property owner and taxpayer. When there's a problem with upkeep, repairs, trash removal, code violations, it's the owner's responsibility to comply even if the problem is caused by the tenant, and it's his expense. Without question, we agree that tenants should be provided safe, affordable housing, and of course, that affording is determined when you're signing your lease or when you're getting on board with the property before you move in. So the stability of the housing depends largely on the tenant's ability to coexist within the home and abide by the terms of a signed rental agreement. Certainly, the owner is continuously bombarded with rules and regulations and requirements and spiraling expenses by both the city and the state and the material and service providers. Bottom line, owning and operating a rental property is a business and should be understood as such. Property owners should have the right to determine who lives and continues to live in their properties. We urge the council to hold off on this good cause and give SLYC the opportunity to get back on track with that proposed preferred properties program, a collaborative that was designed by a task force of city and SLYC officials, which features both a required landlord and tenant training program and SLYC membership and meeting attendance. In return, landlords would be recognized as a preferred properties, on a preferred properties list that would be made available. And recently, I heard that that was something that tenants would be looking for. Who are the good properties? Who are considered good by the city? And that would be made available to you by the city. Participants would also be eligible for some yet-to-be-determined incentives, such as maybe some reduced price of required rental certificates. And one last thing. For some reason, I've been affected by this, why is it that only the tenant seems to be considered people? For some reason, I hear people regarding the tenants, by themselves and by others as well. It must be stated that small landlords are people too. They are hard-working investors in our city. They have families, they have hopes and dreams for their future, and they deserve respect and work hard to survive and provide. Thank you.
Thank you. Pearl Ha?
Could you hear me?
Yes, I could hear you.
Good evening.
Pearl Ha?
Good evening, Madam Chair, council members, and mayor. My name is Pearl Ha. I'm here to speak to urge you say no to good cause eviction. First of all, the vast majority of landlords are incentivized to keep landlord in their homes, simply because it provides stable income and avoids very costly vacancies. Secondly, there are already legal protections in place for retaliatory evictions and unsafe housing. New York State Real Property Law, Section 223B explicitly prohibits retaliatory evictions. New York State Real Property Law, Section 235B, ensures that landlords must maintain livable, safe, and sanitary conditions. Therefore, strengthening enforcement of current laws makes sense than upending the tenant and landlord relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. Mina Badu? Mina? Okay. Is she still here? Okay. Steve Markham?
Good evening, doll. I appreciate your time and attention here. My name is Steve Markham. I am a member of SLYC, but I'm speaking for myself tonight as well. I am urging you to vote no on the good cause eviction law. I see this as a New York City mandate to deal with the issues that this bill addresses there, and I really have my doubts to its actual significance in the city of Schenectady. We now have city codes, rental inspections, with a landlord registry to help weed out the less than adequate apartments. There is a landlord and tenant training available through SCAP and other entities that oversee our commitment to provide safe, stable housing and educate both. I would prefer to see the city's planned landlord registry program have the opportunity to refine and help remedy the issues rather than a knee-jerk situation brought to the attention of the city council by a paid activist and a group from Albany wanting us to jump in the boat with them. I have been a rental home provider for 25 years in Hamilton Hill. I rent five apartments out, and I've lived in one for 18 years. The three two-family houses I have are all previously boarded up, as was most of the street. The rents I currently charge are far below the Section 8 rental allowances and do not even compare to New York City rents and quality of units offered. Such as tenants need a good, stable, and affordable place to call home, we need good, stable tenant to afford us the capacity to provide, do the necessary repairs, and come out more ahead than not. As of last Thursday, I currently have a water main leak that is being addressed. There is no procrastinating on an issue like this. The price tagged $5,500. Eviction, when necessary, is not used hastily by any landlord, as it is an expensive and time-consuming prospect. Always leaves us with an enormous cleanup and rehab afterward, not to mention the incredible personal stress and anxiety, and in some cases, fear and actual retaliation. Not to mention the loss of income, while the cost and time and funding come out of our pockets and any savings we have managed to acquire towards maintenance. Quite a few of our landlords in this city have followed this recipe, invested literally blood, sweat, and tears, family money, credit card debt, mortgage debt, pay Schenectady city and school taxes, while improving the over 115-year-old housing stock in the existing Schenectady communities in order to create some form of wealth. And in my case, the only retirement I am looking forward, aside from social security. We have skin in the game. And lastly, I do not believe a worthy and realistic due diligence has been performed for the rate of perceived occurrences that this new law will impact, help very few, if any, and have adverse effects on potential tenants looking for a place to call home, while quality housing providers contemplate staying in the business, reevaluate selling and change in course. Should this be passed by the city council, I would request that Mayor McCarthy veto it and have the city council be professional and do a real study that we can revisit next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Last name, Hussain? Hussain? Last name, Hussain? No, that's not you, sir.
Nope.
Hussain?
Good evening. My name is Fadila Hussein. Good evening. My name is Fadila Hussein. I'm a small landlord in Schenectady. And do you know what landlord did most in their business? Tenants. We are happy to provide tenants with safe and decent housing as proven by the rental certificate. We want long-term tenants who will show care and pride in their units. So why would we want to evict our tenants? We are not, we are not in the business to do evictions. This is our last resort to regain possession of our property. Eviction causes money, time, and stress. Both landlord and tenants have an agreement through a lease. So what is good cause eviction? What's the reason for this proposal? And what is the benefit? Any violation to the lease is a good cause for eviction. However, some violations cannot be proven in court. Example, if the lease say no pet, and there is obviously pet in the building, a dog in the building, how can we prove that the dog moved in? Another example we face is more people move in after the lease is agreed upon. They are seen there over a period of time. They sublet and collect money from these illegal residents. How can we prove this is violation to the lease? Then they destroy the property. I have seen beds set up in the basement. Us landlords want to be protected from these devious and unethical behaviors. And how do we get these extra names of these illegal residents? The sheriff need all the names for a lockout. This is why good cause eviction is a threat to landlords. The authorities making these rules against us has no idea of our struggles. They take away our ability to manage our business. I had a tenant behind four months in rent. She had a roof leak, did not inform me, the roof caved in, and she called codes. Codes issue a notice to vacate. This notice is meaningless, because the tenant still continued to live there, and code does nothing about this. They don't even enforce their own notice. How unprofessional and disrespectful to us. It took nine months to finally get her out with zero rent for nine months, while I had lawyer fees, late payments on mortgage, taxes, insurance, all with penalty. But we cannot collect late fees in an eviction. These tenants left almost everything behind, caused me to dispose of it, plus repairs of floors, bathroom, replace kitchen cabinets, toilet, sink, and refrigerator. This was only one of my experiences with tenants. I have had others over the years, including verbal and physical abuse. How can we survive like this? I vote no to good cause eviction. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Kennedy? Tom Kennedy?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Name's Tom Kennedy. I'm a chair Republican Party. I stand to oppose this good cause eviction. I'm not a homeowner, I'm not a landlord, but I represent many. I'm gonna do a little walkthrough, a little history for maybe some people that weren't here as long as some of us were. There was a time in which we walked through the city and every other house was boarded up. And the Guyanese people came from New York City, spent their time, energies, and capital, and basically rebuilt a lot of the city of Schenectady. That's just the truth of it. Mr. Hafez, I'd like to repeat his testimony, because it means something. He's lived here, he's been a part of the community that has rebuilt Schenectady. So we hear tonight a lot of different things. Everybody has a lot of stats and a lot of, you know, different things that, you know, let's say, you know, figures lie and liars figure, that's an old saying. So we have 11 cities in the city, in New York State, that has this. We have 944 cities and towns. So just want to make that clear. We also have said that there's been no reports or no problems. Well, you go to Wall Street Journal, and I apologize for doing this, Wall Street Journal, June 26, 2025, "New Yorkers Vote to Make Their Housing Shortage Worse." Well, I can attest that is what's gonna happen in the city of Schenectady. These landlords are gonna say it's not worth it. They've had tax increases, 3% this year. You guys know, you did it. You got garbage fees that went up. Now, I mean, these fees, and on top of what Mr. Markham said about fixing his property and having to do that, those are real expenses. You can't walk away from those. So, you know, their expenses are going up, and so therefore, the rents are going up. Now, here's the other problem that you have is in the city of Schenectady. We can't build our way out of the housing shortage. Can't do it. So they're gonna build this huge place out in St. Clair's. There are gonna be 240 apartments. They're all gonna be about 700 to 1,000 square feet. So that means you're gonna have one family, not even one family in there. These are basically studio apartments. So, and those studio apartments, and they're gonna be about $2,000 apiece. Well, what do you think that's gonna do to the housing market, or the rental market? Boom, they're gonna go up. So, I mean, you know, and if you look into all our hotels downtown, they're all full of DSS recipients, because they can't find places. So, I agree with Mr. Markham, Mr. Hafez. We've gotta take a pause here before we do anything that could really do irreparable harm to the city of Schenectady. You guys have that power. And I suggest that you look at the preferred properties list that the mayor is working on with that task force. That may be, I don't know, I don't know enough about it. But I thank you, Madam Porterfield, for indulging me after the time. And I just think that it's time everybody starts working together here and fixing this problem, because it's gonna get bad very quick if we do something that is not good for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Hemat? Hemat, not here? Nope, okay, no worries. Mike DiLorenzo?
Good evening, Mayor, Council President, Council Members. This is the first time I've heard before you. You cannot hear me. You're gonna hear me. Good evening, Mayor, Council President, Council Members. There is no good cause to pass this bill. The tenants already are afforded many venues to air their grievances. They have the court system. In many cases, if qualified, it's free. It's not free to us. They can report their grievances to code. They can make sure the apartment has a rental certificate before renting it. I don't understand how some people come here and testify that they've been evicted many times. No property owner evicts a good partner. The goal is to keep a good partner. I use the term partner because it is what they are. They are partners. It is not the one-way street. The eviction process is long, arduous, and expensive. Eviction is the last resort. Landlords have to follow arduous procedures. I no longer interview prospective partners. I can't ask them, have they been evicted? I can't ask them if they are felons. I don't know what are the things I can't ask to protect my property. So I hire a professional. That costs. That costs. The eviction process is so cumbersome that I no longer do it. I've only used the court system once in 30 years, and I have a worthless judgment for $1,200. I will sell it to any council member for $1. Therefore, I must hire a lawyer. More money. Don't add another regulation to an already overburdened business. Don't make me raise my rent to my good partners to compensate for the bad. Good partners don't deserve this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Rocky Palmer? Rocky Palmer?
Hi, Mayor, Council President, and the Council Members. I just want to address a few things I keep hearing. There are already baseline protections from New York State and the city. I heard something about lead levels in apartments. As soon as a lead level is registered, the county's notified, they notify the property owner. I'm speaking from experience. Let's just say they make sure that the problem is rectified. I read all 16 pages of the law, and there's not one sentence about bad tenants. The tenants who constantly abuse the system, destroy property, and make the landlord and ultimately the good tenants pay more. Not one sentence, and I don't think I've heard anybody from the other side bring it up. And I just find it surprising in all this law here, there's not one reference to dealing with these bad tenants. And we all have our stories. I would urge you to vote no. I just think the bottom line is, good cause will allow tenants to challenge an eviction, just meaning again, longer court times, and just more unpaid rent, and it will just mean higher rents for future tenants. Thank you.
Okay, this, Kem Raj? Last name, it's really hard to...
Good evening, everyone. Most of my brothers and sisters say what I had in mind, but it have good and bad in all. You have good tenants, you have good landlords. There are slumlords too, and there are bad tenants too. For example, I know a guy right through my street where I live, he didn't have rent for six months. He had to go through all eviction process to get the guy out, lose six months' rent, plus they threw the garbage out on the street. And obviously, we got to pay to remove the garbage because the city of Schenectady passed that. So, I'm just trying to say no. All right? Thank you.
Raymond Player? Raymond Player?
First of all, I don't know enough about all this good cause, bad cause stuff, but I hear everybody's story, and I just feel like there's a lot of division, and it needs to come to an agreement because at the end of the day, everyone's going to lose. I don't care what anybody says because, like you said, you fight against them building apartments. They build apartments every day, so your property doesn't really even matter. So, and this is what I'm saying, so there's, hello? So it's just a lot of stuff where if y'all don't come to an agreement, it's going to be a lose-lose situation for everybody. And that's all I can say, is I can't pick no sides. I hear the story, but it's no, it's just bad. It's already bad, you know? And that's the main point of the whole thing. So if y'all don't get it together, then everybody's going to move. There's people that got money that live here and don't like the neighborhood, not because the landlord, not because the tenant, because of everything else that's failing. And a lot of the issues is coming from the city that nobody's addressing with the city, so they're taking out on each other, so they're fighting each other, they causing a rift with each other, they got to live next door to each other, but their main problem is with the city. So until they start addressing things with the city, then they always going to have this problem, they always going to have this rift, they always going to have this beef, they always going to feel like they can't do enough and somebody's going to do enough. While y'all arguing and complaining, somebody else is building, and somebody else is moving in, and somebody going to continue moving, just like all these apartments that's coming. So everybody's getting older, and nobody's getting younger. So your retirement is easily going out the window. Everything that you holding on to is easily going out the window. I don't speak for everybody, I speak for myself. I speak how I see things. I'm not following no crowd because what worked for him is not going to work for me. How he treats somebody is not how I treat somebody. I'm not following nobody but myself. So, you know, everybody got groups, coalitions, committees, but it's all failing because no one's fighting the real fight other people didn't get to fight with.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dan Benesian. I'm an attorney here in Schenectady. I've been practicing in eviction court for more than 11 years. I know both sides because in my first three years, I worked for Legal Aid on the tenant's side. After I got sick and tired of politics, I got out and I started on my own. Now I work for landlords. So I know both sides, both sides of the stories. Now, my prior interlocutor had a very good point. In the current situation, okay, if we are keep fighting each other, we'll be a lose-lose situation. Everybody will lose. And let me tell you why. Because right now, the good cause eviction doesn't, what does for sure, it will make harder for a tenant to be evicted. That's true. But the other point of the story, the other side of the story is that also this good cause eviction will make harder for a tenant to get in. Why? Because nobody's stupid. All these increased costs, which are due to increase in timeframe that you have to evict the tenant, increase in lawyer fee, all these costs will be passed on the tenant. It's exactly like minimum wage per economy. They ask for $15 minimum wage, all those increases are passed by, to the consumers because all the products were increased. The same will happen here. So from now on, I believe everything is fair. And we have three great judges here, and this court can be named a fair, moderate, liberal court. I have been practicing in this court, like I said, for at least seven years, even more, and I have not heard any of these judges to deny a retaliation claim. Always, when the tenant claims retaliation, there's always a hearing. And good side of the story is, this court is not congested by, like Albany Court. I practice in Albany Court as well. And people said it's not congested? Oh, yes. I tell you as a fact, if you ask for a trial in Albany, you will get a trial in October. Here in Schenectady, you'll get a trial in 30 days. And all these judges that, like it or not, because again, you cannot, you have to obey what the judge is telling you to do, like it or not, the judge is giving you a decision right there on the spot. They don't take 60 more days to render a decision. And of course, all these 60 days, and all these three, four, five months, the tenants are not paying rent, and of course, the landlords are prejudiced. And this creates friction. Friction which cannot be easily repaired. And also, what this good cause eviction does, it takes away our ability to have friendly settlements. Why? Okay, so I'll be short. I urge the committee to vote no on this law because, again, it damages both sides. So that's it. Thank you so much for your attention.
Hello again, folks. I've learned a lot tonight, including that I'm a paid activist, so if someone has my check, please send it to my home. I would appreciate it. All right, I just want to emphasize just how little we're asking for here. I really can't emphasize this enough. Earlier today, we heard a stat, I believe Sean, it was, I believe it was my friend Sean had it here, that of, no, sorry, it was Ellie. We have about one-fifth of evictions in this court are holdover evictions? Okay, so that's 20%, which means 80% are nonpayments. There might be a very small percentage of illegal activity evictions, which are a separate category, but probably close to 80% are nonpayments. Guess what's really not affected by good cause eviction, y'all? Nonpayment evictions. Only if it is a massive rent hike. Presuming that that's not happening, if it's just a person who just fell behind on rent, honestly, not affected by good cause eviction. That is A number one of good cause to evict a tenant. I also heard earlier today that there's not a word about bad tenants in the good cause eviction law. There are so many words about bad tenants in the good cause eviction law. You can find them helpfully categorized under RPL 216, grounds for eviction. There are 10 categories that are grounds for eviction of tenants. They start with the obvious ones, like nonpayment of rent, like destruction of the property, like illegal activity in the property, and they move down to the more kind of weird and arcane ones, like removing the property from the rental market, or choosing to demolish the entire building. There are so many things about bad tenants in the good cause eviction law. If you have a bad tenant, if you have a tenant who's not paying rent, you can get them out. This does not affect you. We are asking for very, very little of you. I was not one of the people who was incredibly thrilled when good cause eviction passed at the state level because it wasn't the bill that we wanted. It is laced with compromise. The bill in front of you, the bill that you are voting on, is a product of tortured negotiation and compromise at the state level. That's why it contains so many exemptions. That's why it has a relatively extensive listing of grounds for eviction. This will affect a relatively very vanishingly small number of evictions in the city of Schenectady. But for those ones that it affects, it will save their lives. It will keep people from being evicted for literally no reason, simply because the landlord felt it like it. I have, I know landlord lawyers, I go against them all the time. I too practice in this court. I was against Mr. Benesian the other day. I know, I know how it looks in here. And I can tell you, I had a landlord lawyer, a friend of mine, a man I respect and consider a friend, he told me the other day, Colin, there's no such thing as a no cause eviction. Every eviction has a cause behind it. Every, even these no cause holdovers, which is what would be affected, there's always a reason. Well then, say it and put it in the court papers. We're not asking that much of you. Thank you.
I have, I have no one else signed up to speak, so I declare the public comment on the legislative agenda closed. This time, ask for approval of the legislative consent agenda. Moved by Mr. Mutaviran, second by Mr. Farley. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we do have a roll call. We have one resolution for roll call this evening, and the clerk would please read item number two.
Item number two for original conservation. A resolution calling for a public hearing to create a local law for Article 5, Section 210-20 to Chapter 210 of the Schenectady City Code, prohibition of eviction without good cause.
Need a motion? I need a motion for this too. Moved by Mr. Mutaviran, second by Ms. Patrick. Is there any discussion on this item before the clerk calls the roll? No?
So I just wanted to, Madam Chair, thank you. I just want to say really briefly that this is, this is about the public hearing for good cause. Is that correct? Is that what we're talking about?
That is correct. We're not voting tonight, we're just asking, it's call for public hearings, sir.
Absolutely. So I guess I'm surprised that we are having a roll call to talk about just a public hearing. I think on either side of this issue, and I think there's a lot more than two sides, and there's a lot of nuance here, everyone would agree that a responsive and responsible governing body would allow time to hear voices so we can make a more informed decision. So this is not voting right now for or against opting in. This is simply about having a public hearing and allowing the public to weigh in more extensively on this issue. And I would, I think it's very telling, and quite frankly, somewhat embarrassing that we're having, that we think that that should be something that's up for debate.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call, if the clerk would please call the roll?
Mr. Toro? Mr. Farley? Mr. Mancini? Mr. Mutaviran? Ms. Patrick? Mr. Williams is absent. Ms. Porterfield?
Thank you. I'd like to explain my vote. First of all, as Mr. Farley said, this is simply calling for a public hearing, giving the public an opportunity, all sides of the public, regardless of which side of this issue that you're on, an opportunity to more than one time, because this is an issue that obviously is very passionate for a lot of people. So this gives the public, and not only the people that we're accustomed to hearing from, but a people that, who don't normally come here, are then become aware of what's going on, and give those individuals an opportunity to come as well. Now we know that there, well, maybe you don't know, there also has to be a public hearing that the mayor will have to, that will have to be before the mayor, because that's how a local law is passed. So there would have been two. So this was simply, again, calling for a public hearing, giving the folks that we represent to come before us and say whatever their, whatever their position is on this. It was not, this is not to pass this tonight, but simply to hear from our constituents, which I am not really clear on why we would not want to do either. However, we all have a position that we make, and so I vote yes on passing, on having the public hearing. However, the motion is defeated by four to two. It's only the public hearing motion, just to be clear, that's defeated tonight. It's only the public hearing. We still have things to do. The local law has been introduced tonight. Our corporation counsel explained what needs, how that goes forward. So the local law has been introduced, and it has to lay before the council for a certain amount of time. It does not mean that we haven't made a final decision, so I just want you all to understand how that works. At this time, we'll have privilege of the floor regarding general city business. And I have seven people signed up to speak, and the first person is Anthony Carrada.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Madam President. Now this is just strictly my opinion. As a law-abyssing citizen, I stand with, support, and respect all law enforcement officers. Now, for quite some time, law enforcement has been getting bad wrecked. Even though law enforcement itself, certain brave men and women in law enforcement, there has been instances where they have overstepped the bounds of their job. Now I understand in certain communities with individuals, in certain communities that trust is issued, that's fine and dandy. Law enforcement, for six years now, has been trying to rebuild that trust with certain communities. Now Friday, while you and your county part there in the county, and in the government body, will be at certain public events, that... in the county, and in the government body, will be at certain public events, that lately, prior to that, this government body, or any government body, I don't know why certain individuals and government bodies want to defund the police. If you all were to defund the police, they would not be in certain situations to de-escalate. You would have, that's social workers, that's where you would have a set of police officers doing their job. I understand, the last time you tried to do the budget, three individuals on this council said, "Defund the police." Why? Because you believe lies are perpetrated by the media. The cops, our brave men and women in law enforcement, now, I could be wrong by these factors, but you can look them up if you don't believe me. I forget what percentage it is, but our brave men and women in law enforcement are less than likely, less than likely, to pull the service weapon on people of color and Hispanic origin. They're less than likely to pull the service weapon on someone like me, okay? Those are the facts. And also the thing is that Friday, at that event, a 14-year-old, for whatever reason, was trying to disrupt that, law enforcement were trying to de-escalate the situation. That individual was trying to resist arrest. Why? Law enforcement, our brave men and women in law enforcement, have been doing their job, will be doing their job, they're here to protect our safety from everybody. That's why Saturday, I would dress as Chase from Paw Patrol, the police pup, at the Comic-Con there at the library. I respect law enforcement. Unlike somebody here who thinks the race, that law enforcement is racist, when law enforcement is not racist. They're just doing their job!
Mr. Carrata, address the chair. Mr. Carrata? Miss, listen, that's not going to happen here. Crystal Dionne? Crystal? Going third time, Crystal? Cynthia Farmer?
Good evening. Madam President, Mayor, and Council. I've heard a whole lot this evening, and I'm here to do, address the homelessness that's happening on State Street. It has become a very big problem. People are sleeping in the bus shelters, and people are just walking around. Our children have to walk past that in the morning when they go to school, and I just think that there's something that we need to do. We got to come up with some kind of solution for these people to be sleeping in the shelters. I talked to a young man, his name is Tony, he didn't have any shoes on his feet, and I said, "Where's your shoes?" He said, "It's in the bus shelter. That's where he sleeps, because he was kicked out of the Cara House and the Bethesda House because he talks too loud." Well, the young man is deaf. Can't hear. So, Mayor McCarthy, you got to do something.
You have to address the chair. You have to address the chair.
Oh, okay. You have to do something about this. You got people sleeping in the cemetery. People pay for their loved ones to be rested there, and you got people laying and sleeping on top of them. You have the people bring mattresses in the bus shelters. They take the furniture that people put out, and then they take it and put, I seen the whole sectional in front of the cemetery, further up, where people were laying and sleeping all night. We have to do something. We got to come up with a solution. We're building all these, and then you're talking about landlords and the tenants, and people can't afford. This young man that I talked to, he only gets $1,300 a month. He can't afford any rent here. We ought to think of something to do with these people. They need help. They're not going to be able to get a job. They can't, and then I don't understand why you put the Cara House and the Bethesda House, and they let the people sleep there, and then they put them out in the morning. And then they hang out all day until they can go back in at night. So we have to come up with some kind of solution to remedy this problem. I mean, I hear the other problems, but, you know, and I don't understand this new Schenectady thing, why we have posters all up and down, 90 and all over here, New Schenectady. When did we change our name from Schenectady to New Schenectady? And we got all this problem. It's embarrassing to have all these people running up and down, they're sleeping and walking up and down State Street. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jamaica Miles?
I'm going to talk really fast, y'all are going to have to just deal with it, because on Friday, July 11th, Schenectady Police harassed and assaulted several black children, 14-years-old, injured and restrained on the ground by multiple officers. This happened in broad daylight at a city-sponsored event meant for youth and families called Summer Night. Yes, I talked about it on Live. That sure as hell did happen. This is not a misunderstanding. This is not community safety. This is violence. This is a system failing our children again and again. We will not be silent, because back in May, an officer fired his weapon at a child who was having a mental health crisis. There was an investigation, or at least the chief said there was going to be an investigation. Ain't nobody heard nothing about the investigation back in May, but we're going to just feel okay about what happened on last Friday. That's not going to happen. And when we turn ourselves back to the good cause, thank you for the honesty on telling people that they should just get out if they don't like their apartment that isn't inhabitable. And again, any expense that you have and can justify is allowed. Both property owners and renters should be concerned with increases in fees and taxes in the city. If you are willing to leave for being held to a standard of being a good business owner, goodbye. Tenants holding rent for six months, you waited six months, someone waited six months before they started the eviction process, that's an interesting business model. How to run rental property is something that individuals say that they are teaching. Well, it's not going very well for a number of the property owners. Those that are doing right are doing right, and those that are not should be held accountable. The property owner is responsible for the property, and if damage is done by the renter, they have the right to charge the tenant for those repairs. This doesn't go, this doesn't change under good cause. Who lives and continues to live in a property because you rented it to them and you changed your mind, and now you don't want them to live there, but you don't have a good cause? Yes, we're saying that you shouldn't be able to do that. The idea that we should just let slick get on task with training their property owners and not continue to move forward this piece of legislation is lazy and ridiculous. Yet, we all want, we all want a preferred property owner list. I would have loved one for every year that I had to move out of my property. No, nobody said that they were evicted over and over again. We had to move because we didn't have quality apartments to live in. The vast majority of landlords are incentivized to keep people in their homes. Based on what? Tell me where are your statistics? Because yes, we did hear a lot of data and statistics, and it seems that some of the council members are not taking it seriously, and don't believe in credible messengers or the data that's in front of them unless it fits their current narrative. The doubts to the significance of that data, I'm sorry that you just don't believe math and science, no matter who puts it forward, if it goes against your beliefs. A landlord registry program, yes, that absolutely should happen. It doesn't mean that we don't move forward with good cause. The idea that there's a knee-jerk reaction as if this has not been an issue for years, and that there was immense compromise around good cause, it is something that's been talked about over and over again. This is not a knee-jerk reaction. It is a last-minute call by some people who should have done this a really long time ago. But hey, do you really want to have another study and revisit this next year because we're willing to sacrifice people for another 365 days? You think it's okay to continue to kick the can and let people be homeless, to let individuals face retaliation for our children to be in the most transient city that one can imagine? Because that would make you a really good representative. Why wouldn't it? The idea that we were not even willing to have a hearing, you would deny people the right to be heard. Why? Because we're going to show up anyways? Is that what it is? We shouldn't have some type of formal hearing from individuals, giving them another chance to be heard on an issue that is good for the majority of Schenectady? That is absolutely, and yes, I'm going to say it, deplorable.
I need to summarize.
And with that, may God bless you and keep you, because y'all need prayer.
Thank you. Valerie, Valerie Troyano, Troyano, Valerie?
Hello again. I'm just here to sign up to speak. Oh, God, sorry, I'm kind of winging this one. So, bear with me. So, I'm here to state shame on Schenectady Police Department for what they did to a child during Summer Night. Police are supposed to be trained on nonviolent de-escalation, and unless I checked, I don't think nonviolent de-escalation includes slamming a child on the ground where they hit their head on the pavement. And also, I would like Mayor McCarthy to hold those officers accountable for assaulting a minor. These are 14-year-old boys. How would you feel if a man who had the power to be okay and get away was shooting somebody with a gun to slam your 14-year-old child on the ground? You wouldn't like it, now would you? So, hold those officers accountable, and if you don't, just remember, we, the people, are the ones who vote you guys in, and we can kick you out of your seats. Keep that in mind. Shame on the police department, and hold those minor assaulters accountable, and a grown man should never lay their hands on a child. Never. Hold them accountable. And to the landlords who keep complaining today, I'm going to give them a little piece of advice, which is, pull your boots up with a boot strap and get a second or a third job. If you can't afford all of this, just do what everybody always tells us people who complain about being poor, which is get an actual job, and a third or second job. That's what, when my father was struggling with rent, that's what my grandmother told him. Stop complaining. Stop mooching and leeching off of us to help you pay your rent and get a second or third job. That's what I've done when I started with New York State Tax and Finance, and they, you would get no pay for five weeks because of the processing. I pulled myself up with the boot straps and got a second job, and I worked seven days a week. I worked during the week for New York State, and then on the weekends, I did Instacart. I pulled myself up on the boot straps. I made sure I was getting income in for those months. That one, five weeks, I would not have income coming in. Did I complain? No, I pulled myself up the boot straps. So landlords, get a second income. Get a second or a third job, just like everybody tells us to do. I heard you laugh. Thank you.
Thank you. Shamina B. Song? Shamina B. Song, is she still here? Okay, thank you. Teri Robin?
Hi, I'm just, I don't know, I read the articles in the paper recently about how this is working in other cities, including Albany, Hudson, New York City, other places. And it seemed as if it was working pretty well, this good cause eviction law. I didn't read any, what I read in those, in the Gazette, was that these cities didn't seem to have any big problems with it. In fact, they thought it was working quite well, which made me feel good, because it does seem to me like it's only just that you would have to have a good reason to throw somebody out of their home. I have been on both sides. I've been a renter, I've been a homeowner, and I've been a landlord. And by the way, I think there's a reason, oh, she's gone now. I think that if landlords want to be called people, then they should stop calling themselves landlords, and tenants should be people too. So maybe it should be property owners and renters, as opposed to landlords and tenants. I don't know. I think that as a landlord myself, of, you know, one building with two flats and built-in tenants, that when we bought the place, and we bought it as a favor to our friend who was trying to sell it, and we had gotten a very lucky thing happened to us, so we decided instead of putting our money into stocks and bonds, we would buy this place and help her out. And we kept these tenants, and they're still there, and they, we haven't, we've only raised the rent like twice in 20 years, and, you know, it's just because we don't really need to get more money than we're getting. And we want them to stay there because we, they're good tenants, and we'd rather not have to try to find another tenant that we don't know. So, you know, our objective was not to get rich, it was just to do something with this money that we had been fortunate enough to get. It just seems like, if, and, you know, people that have 20 apartments or 20 buildings, or whatever, you know, they don't need all that. If they, if they really have so many problems handling all that, then they should probably scale down and, you know, work with what they can work with. We, I lived in apartments where the landlords continued to raise the rent every six months in the stockade. This is many decades, you know, 30 years ago. But it was like, they wouldn't do anything to fix the problems at all, but it would be like, you'd still get a rent raise every six months, and it made no sense to me. And then I, there was another place I lived downtown Schenectady where the owner was a pharmacist, and he would not do anything to raise the temperature during the winter. We had to, we had to show him how there was, you know, three inches of snow on the inside of the windows, and we were having to wear mittens and jackets all the time. And, you know, tenants don't usually have much power, that's for sure. So I don't think it's a bad thing to give them a little more dignity, respect, and power, and, you know, equality. I mean, landlords shouldn't just be able to wield all the power. When you're not rich, it's hard, and when you're poor, it's hard.
I need to summarize.
I also lived and worked in a homeless shelter, so I know all about homeless people too, and they don't all deserve to be homeless, believe me. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I declare the public comment of city business closed. At this time, any miscellaneous business of council? Ms. Patrick?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that the summer lunch program that the Sycamore Collaborative has underway is in full swing. They're already seeing like a huge increase in the numbers of people that, numbers of children that they're feeding. So I wanted to suggest that there's a list of the sites, obviously, on the Sycamore Collaborative website, but they also need more volunteers to help with the summer meals program. So I would encourage people to reach out specifically to Kerry Wolf-Picota at the Sycamore Collaborative, if you were interested in volunteering to help give out the summer meals. Kerry's number is 518-374-2683, extension 120, over at Sycamore. And the meal program is at many of our city parks, at the library, and there's a whole list here that I'd be happy to share with folks, but you can find it on the Sycamore website as well. I also wanted to mention that last night was the first concert for Music Haven at Central Park. It was just unbelievable how many people were there for the first concert, which was a wonderful Punjabi group called Red Barat. This Friday is the next concert, which is the SUNY Schenectady Faculty Jazz Combo with featured guest Nestor Torres. So that should be an amazing jazz concert on Friday evening at Music Haven in Central Park, and that would be at 7:00 PM. The concessions open at 6:00 PM. Also, the Schenectady County Food Council. I'm a member of the advocacy group for the food council. They are having another community listening session to hear more about, from folks about their hunger issues. That is Wednesday, July 30th, over at the Electric City Barn at 5, well, they're going to serve food, as they always do, at 5:30, and then the program will begin at 6 o'clock. So again, that's So again, that's the Schenectady County Food Council and you can find that as well on, on their website. Um, I also wanted to mention that the Library Summer Reading Club, Reading Program is underway for both children and adults. It's called Color Our World this year. Uh, there's really a lot of fun activities that the library has planned to try to encourage both children and adults to uh, do a lot of reading this summer. Uh, so I hope that folks will take advantage of that and get your bingo card and try to fill it in by reading uh, different kinds of books and poetry this summer. And that's all I have, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farley?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, geez, not really sure where to start. Um, I think, um, as, you know, it was important to me that I was listening really intently to all sides of the issue. Again, I think there's more than, um, than two here. Uh, I think it's a far more nuanced than, um, than people are given credit to. But, you know, in my conversations with landlords, which I've reached out to Slick multiple times and say, let's sit down and have a conversation so I could better understand, um, your position. Because the members that I've spoken to that were members of Slick, we sat down, we had a meeting. And the question that I asked them was, what reason, as a landlord, have you evicted someone or would evict someone that's not on the list? And all of the, I believe if I'm up to six now, not one landlord has been able to provide me with a reason that they would evict a tenant or have evicted a tenant that's not al- already allowed on the list. Um, so I understand people's emotions, um, but the reality are, the facts just don't support what's said. The facts just don't support what's being said. Um, I would also just, you know, for my colleagues on City Council, I think that, um, if we're not careful, we start to go to a place where sometimes we oppose things, legislation based on who, who's bringing it forward more than the, the, um, the legislation itself. I say that gracefully. I don't say that to be accusatory, I actually say that gracefully because I don't believe that we can listen to people, get up here, be extremely vulnerable, and talk about their situations and things that they've experienced and act like this is not a worthy cause or worthy legislation passed. So I don't think that, uh, and, and to that point further, I was like, why wouldn't we at least wanna have a public hearing? Well, I'm gonna be graceful to say again, I know that the mayor is required to have a public hearing, but I also think that it's difficult to sit here and listen to people who are coming and saying like, look, this is my reality, this is my neighbor's reality. And then on the other side of the issue, even every landlord that got up here today and spoke, they didn't give one reason, they talked about people who are not paying the rent. It's already in the legislation. They talked about people who damaged property. That also is, is in the legislation. So again, it's one of those issues where the facts don't support it. So I don't know how someone can really read through this legislation and disagree with it, that you need to have a good cause to uproot a family. Um, I'm a little disappointed, but I'm gonna, again, be graceful, gracious to say, there must be something that I'm missing. And I super invite my colleagues, I've reached out to, to multiple of my colleagues here to explain to me, um, why that, what piece of this I'm missing. Cuz I just actually don't get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farley?
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone that came out this evening and previous evenings and repeatedly on each, each, um, uh, what they wanted to speak on. I'd like to just speak right now on our city pool. Um, so, uh, I just want to, um, let everyone know that there are many, many swimming lessons available at the city pool and at the high school. Um, there's, uh, today I brought my granddaughter to the high school and Coach Crandall, I believe his name is, sat, stood there and spoke to every parent, grandparent, guardian, and child before the ten-thirty swim lesson. We don't wanna leave any child behind when it comes to uh, swimming, life safety. So, there's a website that you can sign up on, or Coach Crandall said, just bring your child on over. Uh, it's from, um, um, levels one, two, three, and four, where they're diving off the board. But I want to encourage everyone to take advantage of bringing anyone you know. He said invite your friends, your family, anyone. It's so important. There's lessons from eight-thirty in the morning until three o'clock in the afternoon with plenty of lifeguards there at the Schenectady High School Pool, but also within our public pools throughout the city. And I wanna thank, um, all of us, the Boys and Girls Club, for making that possible because it's extremely important for our youth to know how to swim. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight and their thoughts and opinions on the issues that are facing us. Uh, I believe it's slightly cooler outside than in this chamber, so I'll yield any time back to the President.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone that came out tonight that voiced their opinion, whichever side of the issue that you were on. Uh, I think it's important, I've always said this, that we hear from our constituents. And I know that some people say, well, not everyone that was here tonight spoke, that spoke is from the city of Schenectady. But it's also important to hear from people who are well-informed about the topic so that we make sure that we get the information necessary and we're not just, um, counting on people who just heard what someone else said. So having people, even if they're from outside the community, if they're well-informed, have studied the legislation, et cetera, I think it's important to hear those voices as well. We, we listen to other governmental, um, we often say, we, let's look what another municipality is doing and that isn't that much different. Uh, in terms of, um, the, this good housing, good, um, cause eviction, at the last meeting, I stated that SCAP, I incorrectly stated SCAP's position, so I just want to correct that. It was stated that SCAP said they were against good cause. And, um, but then if you went to the SCAP website, they said they were not taking any position on it. So I just wanted to clarify, it was brought to my attention after I said it, so now I'm correcting it. I just, I also want to just remind folks that there is also a housing forum tomorrow at the Schenectady Public Library. It's the second one that they've had at six PM. So individuals that want to go, um, it is really around housing in the city of Schenectady. So if you're a Schenectady resident, you wanna attend, talk about it, hear different things, talk about different solutions. I invite you to all to go there. And there's one more, one thing that was said at the rail today that I want to correct. There was an individual that came that said that three council members stated that they wanted to defund the police. That was not said. So I just want to clarify that, they didn't give names and I don't know who they're talking about. But I know that no council member said, "defund the police." So I just want to clear the record on that. There's all sorts of things attributed to council members saying that they didn't necessarily say. So if I have the opportunity to correct that, I will. That's all I have this evening, so I entertain a motion to adjourn. Move by Ms. Patrick, second by Mr. Mu Tiviren. All's in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a good evening.